Order this school board meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 624, and I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Bell Lloyd.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Strife OJ.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Arcan, here. And for the final time, I'm going to make this call. New Master.
All right, thank you. I'd ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have before us an agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Daniels and a second.
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. We also have before us a consent agenda, which is the various things that come before us monthly, including donations. And if you saw, there were three entire pages of donations from our community this month, which is incredible. So thank you so much to our community for your support of our students and teachers. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Bell Lloyd. Any questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Bell Lloyd.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan, aye.
Thank you. We have a consent agenda. It is now the time for public forum portion of the meeting. There was one request submitted to speak. Public forum allows for three minutes per speaker. The Vice Chair will keep the time, and then with one minute remaining, an orange card will be held up. Thirty seconds remaining, a yellow card will be held up. And at the end of three minutes, the red card will be held up and the gavel will be tapped. Speakers will be called to the microphone and recognized one at a time. Only those individuals who have been recognized will be allowed to speak. School district policy and data privacy laws preclude personnel and student matters or data from being publicly discussed. Informational item C1, recognition of retiring school board members. Dr. Newmaster. Dr. K.
Yeah, well, I'll start, but there might be others who want to share. I'll open what's in the memo. So tonight, the school board will recognize invaluable contributions to White Bear Lake Area Schools outgoing board member Marge Newmaster. Marge has served on the school board since January 2016, and she has worked for the district for more than five decades, beginning in March of 1971.
I earned this white hair.
So we have just a small bit of information to share, started in 1971. And Marge, if you want to jump in, you go right ahead. You've earned that right to jump in and talk about any of these stops along the way. But Lake Ayers Media Center, 1971, then '82 to Mariner High School as a German teacher, '85, North Campus Media Center, and then 2016 on our board here in 2016. So.
Missed one.
We missed one.
I was at North Campus, and I know I was teaching German again the year the wall went down.
All right.
So that's, and my son was in my class.
Okay.
He loved it. But anyway, it's been a long ride, but a good one.
Oh, there's more pictures.
There's more. Just wait, Marge. Yep. You'll have your moment here. If you want to advance. Nope, back one, unless we're...
No.
Okay. There we go. There was a quote. Was this in an interview with the White Bear Press? Is that correct? Is this where this was from? Yeah, yep. So this was in the White Bear Press recently. There was an article, a quote attributed to Marge. "I love books and I love finding the right book for someone."
If I'm waiting in a lobby or in a long grocery line, I always ask the person next to me, "What's the best book you've just read? Have I got one for you?" You just can't take the librarian out of a librarian.
Okay, and then here's a quote from that story. In 1985, Newmaster transferred to the Media Center at North Campus, where she began work on her main technical contribution to White Bear Lake Area Schools, providing an online search system. Over the next few decades, Newmaster helped students search for authoritative sources on every type of research paper.
Other add to that is, we actually physically created the online card catalog because there was no money in White Bear to have it sent out. So I had three years of volunteers, most of them senior citizens, who came in and typed all the information from the catalog card into what was then the top one. So that was, again, community labor. So it was good.
All right. You made a difference there, for sure. And then just a couple of pictures. School board recognizes the invaluable contributions to White Bear Lake Area Schools outgoing board member, Dr. Marge Newmaster. And that was probably your initial year on the board, the picture on the top right, and then a more recent photo as well.
First or the second, it was one of those film clips that somebody thought would be fun to make.
Yeah. Well, that's right. That might have been your first.
Yeah, it might have been Don Mullin and others as we had to pass.
Well, and if I may, really quick, before you...
Oh, we have some.
Yeah, before you give that.
Go right ahead, yeah.
So I did a little bit of math, and it's 644 months of service to this district, which is about 13,000 workdays. And in that time, you encountered thousands of students. So I figured if every student who enrolled at North passed through the Media Center even once a year, Marge crossed paths with over 30,000 students. And if each of those students read even one book a year, at an average of about 200 pages per book, that is 6 million pages of books. And if each book page was about nine inches tall, then those individual pages of all the books that Marge's students read stacked end to end would be about 425 miles or from White Bear Lake to Kansas City. But knowing Marge, they probably read two books a year, so it's Kansas City and back.
We had a book club at North Campus. I know they read more.
So that's a lot of service.
Well, it was enjoyable.
Well, Marge, I'm the only one sitting on the board that you had to come out and tell it be quiet in the language lab in 1982.
That was my one year there.
And I'll never forget it.
You were full of Mariner spirit.
Yes, that's what it was.
That was teaching German. It was hard to teach over you guys in the lab.
So, Marge, we have a gift for you in appreciation of your service on the White Bear Lake Area School Board, January 16, January 2016 to December 2024. So we're going to get a picture.
Okay.
Will come up. You'll be in the front, as you usually are.
Can you see me in some of those pictures? My kids, my kids go to the hospital.
Yeah, and then if there are any final comments afterwards, we'll certainly take those.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, seeing none. Again, a huge thank you to the Policy Committee. It's a ton of work to go through all of these policies, so we're grateful for all of your work. And these policies will then come back to us for a second reading and approval in January. So we're going to roll into our operational items, seeing that it is 546. We can't do operational items E1 or E2 because those are both for the property tax levy and the projected budget, which we have not heard from yet. So we can move into operational item E3. I'm going to give you a minute to get down there in the board packet. Operational item E3. Which is action. Action on the acceptance of brochures grants. I'm still scrolling.
I can jump in if you want.
Okay, yes, if you could, Dr. K. That would be great. Page 106 in the board packet, 106.
All right, so White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation has forwarded eight brochures teaching grants and three Ryan Art Grants to me with a request that these grants be formally accepted by the school board. As part of the internal process, prior to consideration of any proposal, the foundation reviews the proposals with our administration, and we confirm that these proposals are consistent with our curriculum, and if technology is used, consistent with our technology plan. I will read the recommended action. The grants are highlighted in the packet. I'm not going to read through those. Again, just a huge thank you to our foundation for their generosity year after year. The recommended action is to accept the eight brochures teaching grants and three Ryan Art Grants from the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, as shown in the attached materials, in the total amount of $14,745.45. Whereas the school board believes it is necessary and appropriate to accept the gifts that are reflected upon the following pages, and whereas these gifts are consistent with state laws, school board policy, and administrative practices, and whereas acceptance of these gifts are consistent with the mission and educational programs of the White Bear Lake Area Schools, and therefore be it resolved that the school board authorizes the acceptance and use of the gifts presented.
Wonderful. You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Strife OJ and a second.
Second.
Okay, a second by, I heard it from Ms. Boyd, sorry.
That's right.
Any discussion or questions about any of these grants?
I want to say they look fabulous, and I just want to thank the teachers who wrote the grants or applied for the grants and the foundation for their generous gifts, to the teachers and to the students who get to participate.
Yeah, the number of students impacted, if you add them all up for all of these grants, is pretty substantial. So it's pretty incredible. Any other questions or comments? All right, so this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Bell Lloyd.
Aye.
Daniels.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Strife OJ.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Arcan, aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. We will move into operational item E4. Action on the 2025-2026-2027 school year calendars. Dr. Gillespie.
Chair Ellison, members of the board, good evening. At the last work-study session, I went in detail about the changes that are coming up for the calendar. So I'll just summarize. Really nothing has changed since I presented it at the work-study session. Want to remind you of the calendar parameters that we use every time we look at our calendar. Our collectively bargained agreements must be followed unless we mutually agree upon a change to the parameters. The academic calendar with key dates is proposed two years in advance. So '26-'27 are all the dates that were 99% sure won't change. There are still some dates that need to be placed. The detailed and final academic calendar is proposed to the school board, which is what I have for the '25-'26 for you this evening. Non-student days, this is a parameter we added a few years ago, that we won't have school days separated by elementary or middle school, that we would have K-12 days off. And then our equity decision-making protocol is used when we place non-student days, along with, I do a lot of research of area school districts to find out how their calendars are. They're not similar, so it's hard sometimes to find out the trends of how people are placing holidays. The big summary of what we're doing is we're moving to a district-wide trimester model for reporting purposes for elementary and middle school. We've already talked to you about high school moving to trimesters. This aligns the majority of our system as we move to those trimesters. It also aligns with our reporting with the assessment calendar and the screening testing, which is getting more and more solidified as we work through the requirements of the Read Act. Non-student days you'll see are adjusted a little bit to support this, so the calendar looks a little different than it has in the past. I'm still working with area learning center and transitional education center leaders and educators around their reporting parameters. If I would need to come with an update to the calendar, I don't know yet the impact of that. I will bring it to you at a later date. And then our schools will no longer serve as voting locations, so you'll see those non-student days around Election Day in November, which have been Monday and Tuesday off. We no longer have those days because we'll work to help figure out polling places in other areas. And it really was this past year, only Otter Lake that served as a polling place.
Now, I'm going to jump in there. And Otter was going to remain for next year as well. But it doesn't change the calendar at all. We've been working on that. But just an update on that.
Thank you. And so then here's the calendars that I shared with you. There's also copies in the board packet that you can read better than my slides. And so really, my ask or our ask for you tonight is that you approve the '25-'26 and '26-'27 calendars as presented.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Newmaster and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Thompson. Any other questions or comments?
It's a lot of work.
All right, seeing none. All in favor of approving the two school year calendars, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And they are approved.
Great.
Thank you. And then we will, it looks like we have seven minutes. So we will move into operational item E5, action on the '25-'26 course proposals. Dr. Gillespie.
Again, I'm providing a summary. Jen Babish isn't able to be here. She has a sick child at home. But I, at the school board study session, Russ Reitz, principal at the high school, Carrie Barth, associate principal, and Jen Babish went through these changes. There's a lot. We're super excited about the opportunities for the trimester schedule. So I'll provide an overview of, you know, why we do our decisions, and then just really the numbers of changes that are there. And then you have a detailed list that we went over in more detail at the work-study session in the packet as well. And so we make sure our key considerations are always looking at to make sure students are college and career ready. We look at our career pathways program, student interest. We did, Principal Reitz and his team did a lot of surveying of students in ways we hadn't done before, and really went through a process that was, is pretty cool to see how we're able to offer some many different options for our students. We also had a really collaborative process where teachers were a part of proposing these changes, looking at what needs to be removed, looking at changes that we need to have in our course catalog. Instructional cabinet, our systems accountability committee, which was a large, robust group of people, provided feedback. And then Principal Reitz and his team worked together to finalize those recommendations and presented them to you at our last work-study session. A summary of the course proposals, 41 new course proposals, 25 name changes, seven grade level changes. And what that means is we're able, now that we're a 912 campus, we're able to expand the grade levels that our classes support. Four full-year options, which would be three trimesters, one change to course description, one change to hybrid option, one change to before-school option, and then 22 course removals. The only change from when we presented at the school board work-study session is you'll see two additional removals. They're highlighted in yellow for you on that packet. And those are two CIS classes that are actually, haven't run for a couple of years because, and the Grow Your Own Grant, which we've presented on, will replace those. So the students will still have options. It's just not those course names. We have additional courses that we added. So the recommendation is to approve course proposals, removals, and changes as presented.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or concerns?
Can you see me in some of those pictures? My kids, my kids go to the hospital.
Yeah, and then if there are any final comments afterwards, we'll certainly take those.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, seeing none. All in favor of approving the two school year calendars, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And they are approved. Thank you. And then we will, it looks like we have seven minutes. So we will move into operational item E5, action on the '25-'26 course proposals. Dr. Gillespie.
Again, I'm providing a summary. Jen Babish isn't able to be here. She has a sick child at home. But I, at the school board study session, Russ Reitz, principal at the high school, Carrie Barth, associate principal, and Jen Babish went through these changes. There's a lot. We're super excited about the opportunities for the trimester schedule. So I'll provide an overview of, you know, why we do our decisions, and then just really the numbers of changes that are there. And then you have a detailed list that we went over in more detail at the work-study session in the packet as well. And so we make sure our key considerations are always looking at to make sure students are college and career ready. We look at our career pathways program, student interest. We did, Principal Reitz and his team did a lot of surveying of students in ways we hadn't done before, and really went through a process that was, is pretty cool to see how we're able to offer some many different options for our students. We also had a really collaborative process where teachers were a part of proposing these changes, looking at what needs to be removed, looking at changes that we need to have in our course catalog. Instructional cabinet, our systems accountability committee, which was a large, robust group of people, provided feedback. And then Principal Reitz and his team worked together to finalize those recommendations and presented them to you at our last work-study session. A summary of the course proposals, 41 new course proposals, 25 name changes, seven grade level changes. And what that means is we're able, now that we're a 912 campus, we're able to expand the grade levels that our classes support. Four full-year options, which would be three trimesters, one change to course description, one change to hybrid option, one change to before-school option, and then 22 course removals. The only change from when we presented at the school board work-study session is you'll see two additional removals. They're highlighted in yellow for you on that packet. And those are two CIS classes that are actually, haven't run for a couple of years because, and the Grow Your Own Grant, which we've presented on, will replace those. So the students will still have options. It's just not those course names. We have additional courses that we So the recommendation is to approve course proposals, removals, and changes as presented.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second.
Second.
A second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or concerns?
Can you see me in some of those pictures?
Comments? Ms. Daniels.
I just have a comment or question. When you have a course removal, that's due to usually lack of enrollment, correct? I mean, that's the main reason?
Yep.
Or maybe there's a few other things, maybe state requirements, or isn't that usually something that plays in?
It's usually, I would say, they would be able to tell you if it's 100%, but to me, it's pretty close to that, that it hasn't run. And it's not just one year. It would be at least three years that it hasn't run, and it's due to enrollment. So student interest isn't there.
Yes.
And then we relook at how to offer different opportunities for students, so they can still meet graduation credits, but have courses that are exciting for them.
Any further? All right, seeing none. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And they are approved. And then finally, we'll roll into our last operational item before going back to truth and taxation. Operational item E6, which is action on the school board policies. These came before us, the first reading in November. So this reading will be for approval. So the policies are 419, 722, 730, and 805. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Strife OJ and a second.
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And they are approved. All right, so we're going to take just a minute to roll back in the presentation. Thank you, Ms. Vetti. We are going to go back in the agenda, for all of you who are following along, to discussion item D1. As you recall, the public hearing does start no earlier than 6:00 PM. So we do have another two minutes before we will officially begin to allow Mr. Wald and everyone to prepare. Is there anything in Robert's rules for how to...
I don't know. A song?
Pick up space in inefficient, a song Wayne's going to sing. Dr. Kasmatzek's going to sing.
You first.
We have a large number of students here tonight. I assume that you have some deadlines coming up, right, with the class? So, yeah, welcome.
We're glad you're here.
Thanks to be here. Yeah, you're going to learn a lot about school district finance tonight.
And when the meeting is over, students, you're more than welcome to come up here, and any of us can sign your documents for you. So we're really glad that you're here and participating.
Well, good evening, Chair Ellison.
Oh, wait, it's 5:59, Mr. Wald.
I'll just ramble on here for a few minutes. I should have prepared a joke. There's not usually this much anticipation for the property tax hearing.
For all the financial things.
Dr. Newmaster sat through a lot of these. You could probably present this yourself.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of like watching paint dry.
It is a little bit.
Never works when I need it to slow down like this, or when you've got a speech that you want to play.
All right, 6 o'clock. Mr. Wald, and we'll go to discussion item D1, which is presentation and public hearing related to the proposed 2024 payable 2025 property tax levy. Mr. Wald.
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board, Dr. Kasmatzek, and student rep, Thomas Reese. Thank you for being here tonight. This is our public hearing for taxes payable in 2025. The parameters for the tax hearing are set by state statute, and this presentation will fulfill all of those requirements. We'll look at background information on school funding. We'll look at this year's district budget, the district's proposed tax levy for taxes payable in 2025, and then at the end of the presentation, there will be an opportunity for public comment. The state's constitution provides the authority for the legislature to fund public schools. In Article 13, Section 1, it calls for a uniform system of public schools and states that the legislature shall make such provisions by taxation or otherwise. And as it is a legislative responsibility to fund public schools, funding is highly regulated. The legislature develops formulas to calculate revenues, sets tax policies, and maximum property tax levy amounts. Additionally, the state authorizes school boards to place funding referendums on the ballot as they determine to be necessary. I want to share two historic, two examples of historic funding, excuse me, funding challenges for schools. First is the state funding formula has not kept pace with inflation. And in spite of a bit more aggressive approach during the last session, even that increase to the formula was below the rate of inflation. On the chart here, you see the funding level in '02-'03, bottom left of the chart, was $4,966 was the general education revenue formula per student. If you follow the blue line, if that had been adjusted to the rate of inflation over that period of 22 years, the funding formula for FY '25, our current year, would be $8,645 per student. That would ensure approximately the same buying power that schools had in The orange line represents the actual funding on the student formula during the same period, which provides for funding on the general education formula this year of $7,281. That represents a delta of 18.7% or $1,364 per student. In the White Bear Lake Area Schools, that gap represents about $12 million annually. During the last legislative session, the legislature increased funding to 4% to the student formula in the first year and 2% in the second year. The second funding challenge that I'll point out is related to special ed funding. For FY '23, special ed was underfunded. And as it is a legislative responsibility to fund public schools, funding is highly regulated. The legislature develops formulas to calculate revenues, sets tax policies, and maximum property tax levy amounts. Additionally, the state authorizes school boards to place funding referendums on the ballot as they determine to be necessary. I want to share two historic, two examples of historic funding, excuse me, funding challenges for schools. First is the state funding formula has not kept pace with inflation. And in spite of a bit more aggressive approach during the last session, even the increase, even that increase to the formula was below the rate of inflation. On the chart here, you see the funding level in '02, '03, bottom left of the chart, was $4,966 was the general education revenue formula per student. If you follow the blue line, if that had been adjusted to the rate of inflation over that period of 22 years, the funding formula for FY25, our current year, would be $8,645 per student. That would ensure this, approximately the same buying power that schools had in 2002, 2003. The orange line represents the actual funding on the student formula during the same period, which provides for funding on the general education formula. This year, $7,281. That represents a delta of 18.7% or $1,364 per student. In the White Bear Lake area schools, that gap represents about $12 million annually. During the last legislative session, the legislature increased funding to 4% to the student formula in the first year, and 2% in the second year. The second funding challenge that I'll point out is related to special, to special ed funding. For FY23, special ed was underfunded by $726 million across the state of Minnesota. This underfunding required school districts to provide mandated services, but to then transfer from the general fund to make up for the shortfall in state funding associated with special education. These are important services to provide, and we all believe strongly in providing those services, but the state has not kept up with its promise of funding. And so that gap is covered by general education. We call this process of using general funds to support special education funding, the cross-subsidy. And so in the last legislative session, there were some efforts to reduce the special ed cross-subsidy, and I would argue that it didn't go far enough, in that really the state should fulfill its responsibility to fully fund special education. As we look forward to fiscal year 2027, MDE predicts that the underfunding of special education services will be $455 million statewide, so it's a significant issue. And this underfunding has really put pressure on school districts to rely on local property taxes in the form of operating referendum. School district budgets are complex, and they're divided into nine funds. We manage nine separate funds, and these funds are restricted in their use. And we'll look into these in the following slides. This spreadsheet shows revenues and expenditures for the nine funds. We will go into each of these in depth here in the next few slides. And this pie chart shows revenue of all funds, district budget of $190 million, 403, 123. And you can see that the majority of our revenue is within the general fund. That accounts for 76% of the school district's revenue. And nutrition services, community services, debt service make up the others. Looking more closely at general fund revenue, the majority of that revenue comes as state aid. Next is local revenue at 20%, plus LTFM revenue of 4.5%. So you can see that federal government aid accounts for a very small percentage, about 2% of school district budget. That includes title funds, a small amount of special education revenue, and grant funds. And again, that is just special, or general fund revenue. And so we look more closely into the general fund and look at expenditures. You can see in the blue and orange that salaries and employee benefits constitute the majority of our expenditures, combining for about 79%. And this is to be expected in a heavy human resources industry like education. We're not producing widgets. It's really a heavy, heavy human resources industry. Next is purchase services at 14%. So that gets into special, or excuse me, 916 programming intermediate district, career and tech programming at 916, tuition for special education services at 916, some transportation, some maintenance expenses, deferred maintenance falls into that category. Okay, capital and other expenditures combined for 3%. Supplies and materials account for a small percent, about 4% of the school district budget. Okay? And we look at general fund expenditures by program. And if you look kind of across the bottom, starting at the gray and moving left, you can see gray represents regular instruction, yellow is vocational ed, special education in blue at 22%, and instructional support at 7%. Pupil support, that would include counselors, nurses, social workers and like, and transportation combined for about 12%. Pupil support, I said that, sorry, sites and buildings, custodians and maintenance, and LTFM deferred maintenance account for 11%. Administration at 4, and district support services combined for, for 2%, or additional 2%. This is pretty typical, what you find in school districts across the state. It's really very close to what you find in school districts across the metro. It's important to understand a few more things about school funding, that a change in tax levy does not necessarily determine a change in budget. So tax levy is based on many state-determined formulas, plus voter referendums when the state provides the initial formula packet for determining the levy. It's about 40 pages long, full of calculations to get to identifying what the levy would be. Some increases in tax levies are revenue neutral, meaning that offset from state formula. So in some cases, the state has moved, has moved what was provided as state funding into the levy. And so it looks, maybe to a taxpayer, would look like the school district's getting more money, but it's offset by a decrease in state funding. And so it's a neutral move in that case. Revenues are limited by state formulas and a number of other factors. And bottom line is, an increase in school taxes does not always, or an increase in taxes does not always result in a revenue increase for the school district budget. The school district and cities and counties have different levy cycles. So the school districts is on the school calendar year. Our fiscal year begins July 1st, cities and counties begin January 1st. And so taxes payable in 2025 will be for the school year 2526. Each year, property owners get a mailing like this from the county, and it identifies all of the taxing jurisdictions that levy property taxes, so cities, counties, school districts, special taxing districts, like the Metropolitan Council. The, each jurisdiction sets its own levy, and combined all these jurisdictions, levies make up your property taxes on your specific property. The counties act as the fiduciary agents with the responsibility of collecting funds on behalf of each taxing jurisdiction and distributing funds to those jurisdictions. The next slides will dig into the school district property tax process. MDE calculates limits for each district. Most districts, ourselves included, don't levy to the maximum level. School districts can levy in over 40 different categories. Not all school districts qualify for all 40 categories. For example, we don't qualify for taconite resources, but some school districts up north do. And MDE calculates limits for each levy category. This slide outlines the key steps in the process of determining the school district levy. Any step in this process affects the taxes on a parcel of property, but the school board has control over only one of the six steps, and that's step five. Factors that come into play prior to involving the school board include the city or county assessor, legislature, county auditor, Minnesota Department of Education. All of those entities can impact property taxes for any parcel. And then finally, the county auditor has the last stab at it, and they determine the tax rate for each property. Now, this slide walks through the timeline of the six steps from the proposed levy amounts to calculating the data on the proposed property tax. And so we are on the fourth step on this, and the final step will be for the school board to certify the final levy, and that is scheduled for later tonight. The property tax levy for the school district is an increase from 2024 of $3,775,000, or $775,448, a 5%, 5.7% increase. And the following slides will show some, where the significant changes are in the levy, although most of the changes are relatively small. There's a few larger areas. This page provides a summary of our levy changes in the general fund, community services, and debt service funds, for a total levy of $70,477,861. That's at the bottom of the third line there. And then that ties out, you can see of the number I mentioned earlier, increase of 3.7 million or 5.7%. And so we'll get into looking a little bit more specifically at several of these changes. There are changes to the general and debt service funds that are related. So long-term facilities, maintenance revenue is used for the deferred maintenance of school buildings, facilities. There are combination of general fund levy, state aid, and bond issues. In this case, the general fund LTFM revenue has decreased by 2.9 million for next year. Well, there's an increase of 3.6 million in debt service due to scheduled bond payments. And this is a common practice within jurisdictions, really, to coordinate capital and debt levies to reduce the impact on property taxes. The next large adjustment is a prior year adjustment. And so each year, MDE calculates the levy based on estimates. And so we're estimating our enrollment and a number of other factors, but primarily enrollment. Once actuals are entered, the prior year is retroactively adjusted to what the actuals were. And so in this case, we had an adjustment where we under-levied by 949,284 last year, and so that is added to this year's levy as a prior year adjustment. Last year, our levy was decreased because we had overestimated the year before that. And so when you're decreased last year and increased this year, you get kind of a double impact of that. Okay, so each year, there are some prior year adjustments in the levy. Many factors can cause a tax bill for an individual property to increase or decrease. When property owners see an increase in the assessed value of their property relative to other properties, it results in them paying a larger share of the property tax collected. If you build a new garage or put an addition on your house, you find that your assessed value will go up significantly, and when the next tax levy comes out, you'll find that your property taxes went up as well. Others in the community who didn't improve their properties perhaps, or are in a situation where their properties stayed pretty frozen at a certain level, might see an actual decrease in their property taxes. Let's skip that one. Impact of property valuations. So this really is, kind of illustrates that concept very simply, that if you had a school district with only two properties, and both of those properties are $100,000 value, and the total levy for the school district were $500, then each property would pay an equal portion of that property tax, or $250 each. However, one year later, if the blue house were to put a small addition on, and their property goes up by 25%, and the orange house sees a 10% increase, then their share of the property tax would drop. So in this case, the blue house sees their property tax go up to 266, and the orange house sees their property go down to $234. The Minnesota Legislature made some positive changes for, provide some relief for taxpayers in 2023. Those who know me know I don't talk very much, and so... And that was primarily within the homestead exclusion. So the valuation, the top valuation for homestead qualification goes from 413,800 to 517,000. And so for the more expensive homes in the jurisdiction would find a little bit of relief as they get above the 413,800 level. So if you had a $617,000 house, your exclusion, your homestead exclusion now would cover the first 517,000 of that house, then the last $100,000, you wouldn't get the homestead exclusion on that amount of your property. The ag homestead land is less relevant in our community. Okay, now we'll look at a four-year levy comparison. We'll look at examples of property taxes with no change in property value, and examples with properties where the change of value was the average within the jurisdiction of 24.3%. This is based on, examples are in White Bear Lake, right, specifically, and, well, they're averages, it might not show any one person's specific experience, it's simple averages. Okay, so here, you can see home values in that second column, residential home values from 200,000 to 700,000, with taxes payable of 2022 through 2025. And if you follow, let's say, the $350,000 home in the blue box, you can see that the property taxes for that property actually went down. Because the value of that property remained stable, other properties in the school district increased in value. Okay? And you'd see, this illustrates it just in a graph, but you can see those property taxes dropping just slightly. And you see essentially the same, very stable, within the commercial industrial world. On the right is the apartment, non-residential homestead properties. But we know in the real world, property values haven't remained the same. So in this chart, we're looking at property values with a 24.3% cumulative changes in property value. So on the left-hand side, you have a $250,000 home in 2025. That home had a value of 2,000, 201,000, $201,158 in 2022. And so you can see their properties' taxes increased from 1,021 to 1,217. The home on the right is a $400,000 home in 2025. That home would have been valued at 321,853 in 2022. And again, you see the property tax increase there. The home values increased 24.3%. The property taxes increased about 5% less than that, roughly 19.5% over that period of time. The state does have some property tax refund and deferral programs. We won't provide property tax advice to anyone. You can find it at revenue.state.mn.us to learn more about these refunds and deferrals. The homestead credit refund is designed to help lower-income households and has income limits to qualify. It's available to both homeowners and renters. Homeowners can get a maximum refund of $3,310,2640 for renters. The special property tax refund, this is a temporary tax relief program aimed at helping property owners who have seen significant increases in their property tax in a year. So the refund, 60% of the tax increase, above 12% or $100. So you pay the property tax, everything above 12% or $100 then gets a 60% refund. And then finally, the senior city, senior citizen property tax deferral is designed to help seniors stay in their home as they age, and acts a little bit like a reverse mortgage. So seniors with a household income of $96,000 or less can defer a portion of their property taxes on their income. It's not, those property taxes are not forgiven, they're deferred, and then when that house is sold, then the property taxes have to be, have to be paid at that time. But similar to a reverse mortgage, I guess. Okay? And so that's the last of the presentation. And so this point, Chair Ellison, if the board has questions or comments, before you enter it up for public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wald. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wald? Right, seeing none. All those who wish to give a public comment about the, about the proposed 2024 payable 2025 property tax levy will be heard. School district policy and data privacy laws that preclude personnel and student matters or data from being discussed publicly must be followed. If you would like to address the board in regards to the proposed 2024 payable 2025 property tax levy, please approach the podium. Thank you. If you would like to be contacted by a school official after the meeting, please see Rachel Markison in the back of the room, and she will collect your contact information. and she will collect your contact information. All right. Seeing none. We will move into discussion item D2. We'll, and then we'll act upon this later in the meeting in our action items. So discussion item D2, which will be the overview of the fiscal year 2024-25 revised budget and fiscal year 25-26 projected budget. Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. We are, this is a familiar site, image in the budget process to the school board. We always start off our budget presentations with this, so that's familiar to all of you. We're at the midpoint in our budget cycle where we have wrapped up our audit work for fiscal '23-'24. Our auditors are putting on the final touches on that audit report that'll be coming forward for acceptance to the school board in January. And then tonight, we're presenting the revised 2024-25 budget to the school board. This was reviewed with the administration and then with the executive finance committee last week, and so it's brought forward tonight for the school board's consideration. So as Tammyhead said, I won't go into this in detail, but we always present this slide as well when we talk about our budget presentation. And the budget impact had the state-funded General Education Formula allowance kept pace with inflation. The budgetary impact to our budget this school year would have been $12 million. So that just puts into perspective the amount of resources that would be available to students if that inflationary impact had, had kept pace. So some highlights that are incorporated into the 2024-25 revised budget. Our, the, the enrollment deficits that, that school districts across the nation have really experienced as a result of COVID have really stabilized for our school district, and those are incorporated into our, into our revised budget. And as a result of that, we're projected to meet our fund balance policy for both fiscal '24-'25 and '25-'26. 2025 is a legislative budget year, so we're going to keep a close eye on that. And if there's any changes in, that are brought forward in statute, those will be incorporated into the budget that'll be brought forward in June of 2025. And then after this, the revised 2024-25 budget presentation will be brought forward for approval by the school board. Sue. Here's a, the detailed of the budget, the 2024-25 budget is available in the board packet, but this is just a summary. So you can see for the 2024-25 revised budget, we're projecting $144,235, or $239,000 of revenue, and then $143,568,000 of expenses. So in excess of revenue of about $670,000. So that, that folds into that blue line, which is our ending fund balance for unassigned fund balance of about $11,855,000. So that puts us at an ending fund balance percentage of 8.6%. So that puts us within our school board policy of maintaining a minimum 8% fund balance, so. And then when we project forward to next school year, rolling all of that forward, we have about $145 million of projected revenue and $146,000 of projected expenses. So there's a, there's a deficit of just over $1 million. But you can see that we have a planned spend down in our operating capital budget of $800,000. And so only $257,000 is the, is the deficit related to our unassigned fund balance for next school year. And so that brings our unassigned fund balance for next school year projected to be about $11,598,000, so 8.2%. So still within our school board policy. And what that really shows is that our disciplined budgeting that we've done over the last couple of school years and rightsizing our budget based on the enrollment has really taken effect. And so as we continue to watch what happens with this, with the state legislature in the coming year, we'll continue to refine our school board, or continue to refine our, our projections. And when we come forward in June, we will be presenting a balanced budget for our unassigned, our unassigned fund balance for the '25-'26 school year. Looking as well at our operational funds, our nutrition services, our community services, and our debt services fund. Our nutrition services fund continues to see really strong participation as a result of the free meals for all students, and so that we see increased revenue there. We also see increased expenses really related to that high fund balance that we have in nutrition services. There's statute that limits the amount of resources that we can maintain in the nutrition services fund. And so we have a planned spend down that we're, that we're doing in the nutrition services fund. So maintaining about a 29% fund balance in, fund balance in nutrition services. Then in community services, we have about eight point, just under $8.4 million of revenue for our new community services fund for this school year, about $8.3 million of expenditures. So we're seeing additional revenue of about $91,000. We're working our way out of a deficit fund balance in the community services fund. That's really as a result of COVID and the decrease in participation, but really not a, we didn't have the, the decrease in expenses for staffing and such. So we have strong plans to continue to work our way out of that deficit in the upcoming school year. We're making some, some considerable operational changes for this upcoming school year, and we have very optimistic that we're going to outperform our projections for this school year and then continue to see ourselves work our way, work our way outside of, out of that fund balance for the next school year. And then our debt service fund, that's kind of like our mortgage. So the debt service is where all of our bond payments come from. So that's related to all of the construction around the school district, all of the building improvements. The revenue there is related to the planned debt payments that we have related to all of our debt. So about $30 million of revenue there, $31 million of expenses, so about $5.9 million of ending fund balance in our debt service fund. So as I said, a little bit later, we'll be coming forward and asking the school board to approve the revised budget. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Johnson? All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. All right. We are going to, now we've completed all of our discussion items, and we're moving into our two final operational items. So that would be operational item E1, action on the certification of 2024 payable 2025 property tax levy. Mr. Wald?
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. The school board approved the preliminary tax levy on September 23rd, 2024. The requirement for a public hearing on the proposed levy was met earlier during this meeting. And the final step in the tax levy process is for the school board to approve the final levy amounts, or to certify the final levy amounts. In the board packet tonight, you find the levies limitation and certification report provided by the Minnesota Department of Education. The total levy amount to be certified is $70,477,860.93. And the recommended action is that the board approve the certification of the final 2024 payable 2025 property tax levy in the amount of $70,477,860.93.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve? A motion by Ms. Thompson and a second? Second by Dr. Newmaster. Any further questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
B. Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. And then we'll move into our last operational item E2, action on the revised fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Mr. Wald?
Thank you. The school district starts each school year with a, with the guidance of a preliminary budget that's approved by the school board in June. In mid-year each year, the school board approves the revised budget. Earlier this evening, Director of Finance Andy Johnson presented the revised budget for the current fiscal year along with the projected budget for fiscal year '25-'26. The preliminary budget for '25-'26 will be reviewed at the May 19th, 2025 work session, and will presented, will be presented for board approval at the June 9th, 2025 school board meeting. The recommended action is to approve the fiscal year 2024-25 revised budget as recommended.
You've heard the recommended action. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second? Second by Ms. Strife Oji. Any further comments or questions? School district finance is incredibly complicated, and so I'm grateful for all the work that you and your team are doing to keep up on new legislation and changes and ensuring that we're in good financial shape, so.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, this will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
B. Lloyd?
Aye.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Strife Oji?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. We've now reached the part of the board meeting for Board Forum. Board Forum is an opportunity to talk about things that are going on in the district from where we sit as school board members. And so, Dr. Newmaster, I'm going to turn it over to you.
And I will be brief. I can't follow all those numbers with anything that exciting. I just want to express my appreciation to the White Bear School Board and all the staff that support us and help us do our job. And I want to say the experience of serving on the board in a district that I've been in since 1971 has been an honor and an inspiration to see the full breadth and depth of all the efforts that educators, students, families, community, everybody puts in to create an education for each of our students that fits them and prepares them for the future. And I'm really proud of this district and happy to have been part of it for so many years. And now I'll take more time, maybe to play cards at the senior center, who knows? But, or read a lot of books. So, read a book. But anyway, thank you all. Thank you to this crew and all of you out there who came to hear the budget stuff and all of it. We have a good community. White Bear has a great community, so thank you all.
Anyone else have anything for Board Forum? Ms. Thompson?
I just would like to remind everybody that this week kicked off what's called Winter Wonderland at the high school, and it is a way for our community to give back to those who are less fortunate. So all week long, there's a lot of great activities for students in the high school to earn tickets, to win prizes, for doing things. There's decorating door contests. They have a theme for each day of the week for dress up. And then they also have a way where students can earn a ticket for bringing in items that they can donate. And some of the things that people are typically used to are food items, but there's things that people often don't think of, and that is hygiene products. So thinking of sending your kids to school with things like toothpaste and soap and shampoo and a pair of socks and things of that nature. They're also doing a toy drive, and all items can be dropped off this week at the high school office. And it would be greatly appreciated. Items will be donated to students in our own district who are in need. And then anything that is extra will be, I believe, donated to Children's Hospital, is my understanding.
Thank you.
I just hope everyone has a wonderful break and holiday season, and it can be difficult for some, but hopefully they can find ways to celebrate what they do have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Daniels?
Oh, did I look like I had a question?
You did.
Okay, well, since you called on me. No, I was up at the Winter Wonderland at, at the high school today, and it was really exciting. And there was a lot of excitement with the students. And like Angela mentioned, it's a really way to incorporate students at this time of year and get them excited about giving and other, thinking about other people. So it's wonderful.
We had our, our first orchestra concert and band concert in the new Performing Arts Center, and I think the choir concert is this week or coming up pretty soon. And it's a stunning space. It really is. Our students deserve and our teachers deserve to have the space that we're in. And so I want to thank again our community for supporting the, the bond referendum so that we could have these funds specifically dedicated to creating these spaces. It was absolutely beautiful place to watch performances. And I also want to thank Dr. Newmaster for your service. I've been on the board with you the whole time I've been on the board, and I really appreciated the time. It's a lot, this is a lot of time to be a board member. It's not an easy job, and so I'm grateful for your continuing service.
I have the copy of your book reading data.
Oh, I will send that to you. Yes. So, so have a wonderful break, everyone. Teachers and staff and administration, I hope that you get some rest as well, and students. I hope you get to do a lot of nothing for the next couple of weeks, so.
We're ready to sign.
With that, I would ask-
There's still two weeks of school left.
I mean, after you go to school for the next two weeks, and then lots of nothing. All right. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Ellison, I move for an adjournment.
A motion by Dr. Arcand and a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.